I would now like to call our meeting to order. This is the Monday, December 17th, 2018, meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 13th to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Early, Ms. Boguszewski?
Here.
Ms. Satafante? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer? Dr. Saesson?
Here.
Ms. Trujillo?
Here.
And Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a call.
Yay. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize one piece of correspondence from our Assemblyman, Mr. Fryman, and just like to remind the board that tomorrow night, there's an art exhibit at his office from 6:00 to 7:00. He's highlighting the work of our students, and it would be nice for as many of us to attend as possible. We can move on now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a few different presentations, so we'd like to actually begin with a presentation from the PRIDE survey. And to introduce our speakers, Dr. Lisa Antunes.
Good evening. As the board and public know, last March, we conducted with the collaboration of all of those people that you see on the screen there, the PRIDE survey for all students in grades 8 through 12. And this was, it was, we needed to get active consent in order to do this, and it came at the suggestion of Mrs. Minda Maggio, who's our Life Skills Coordinator, and Mr. Gil Polari, who's our high school, one of our high school SAC counselors. Through the collaboration with the Hillsborough Millstone Municipal Alliance, Empower Somerset, Chicotta, the Hundred Inn Somerset Safe Coalition, and of course, the board, we did this, did not take a lot of time for students, and the information we received is valuable to how we're going to move forward in the district. So, without further ado, Mrs. Maggio and Mr. Polari will present the results, the summary of the results from the assessment.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for having us. As we go through the slides, we want to give you a little history on the PRIDE survey. They've been doing surveys and questionnaires since 1982 at over 8,000 schools across the state, and they're a very reliable source, and we were looking to see what we can do to get as much information and data to support the work that we're trying to do and figuring what to do for our students in the District of Hillsborough.
This chart just goes into a little bit more detail about, this questionnaire was 75 questions. We asked a lot of questions of our students about the demographics, risk and protective factors, prevalence of 30-day use of tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, prescription drugs, some perception of risk and harm, and we also had the opportunity to ask a few additional Hillsborough-specific questions. It's important to note that the PRIDE survey currently does not include a category of vaping or e-cigarettes. That's been such a new phenomenon. We were able to get at some of that data through some of our separate Hillsborough questions that we asked, so we'll get to that at the end. Like Dr. Antunes said, this was conducted in March, and these survey results remain anonymous. PRIDE is, they are survey experts, and they presented us with 192 pages of data, so it's a very comprehensive data report. We called it down to about 31 slides here.
Not tonight for 192.
Right.
So, as you see with our demographics, it's pretty, this is broken down by grades and gender, and we have 791 students. This is a significant amount for the survey. A lot of people have said, even they said, they would get like 12% as very good. We were able to get 27. So, we have a good amount to look at here for, to represent our schools. The demographics also show that we're, this is who we are. It matches our demographics, it matches who we're doing, so it's a very good representation for what's been going, for who we're looking at, and what has been going on, and what we're going to be asking about. So, you know, going forward, we're looking to try and match this data, see where we're going, and see how much more we can get.
In terms of, one of the categories that we looked at are risk and protective factors. Risk factors are conditions that increase the likelihood of a young person becoming involved in drug use. Protective factors are those things that we want to, those are the things that are going to protect our kids from getting involved in drug and alcohol use. Research shows that when adolescents are, when they're exposed to more risk factors, they're more likely to get involved in some of that risky behavior. When their protective factors are increased, they are less likely. One good analogy that we kind of talked about is when we talk about heart disease, a risk factor, if you have heart disease, a risk factor would be like eating a really high-fat diet. A protective factor would be doing a lot of good exercise. So, that's sort of the analogy that we talk about when we look at risk and protective factors. In the world of prevention, these are really important for us to understand. And then there's things that we can look at in the community and really kind of dive into it. So, the first slide is our risk factors. It's a little hard to read, it's a little bit small print. The black line down the middle is the normative average, which is 50. So, in the world of risk factors, we're really looking for things to be below that line of 50. And you can see everything on the chart is below 50. There's one that's at 51. The red bar at the bottom, that's our Hillsborough average at 27. So, what this chart tells us is that we're doing really well in terms of risk factors. But, we always want to be looking at things, so we looked at the things that are closest to 50, the one that's at 51, the one that's at 45, and those are the things that we want to, if we zero in on them, and maybe put some prevention dollars and put some prevention efforts to those specific things, we feel that would be money well spent. That goes to risk factors. You could jump to the next slide, Dr. Schiff.
So, these are the, talking about the protective factors. We have a couple more now.
There you go.
And looking at the last charts, it's the same concept, that normative 50 in the middle, for risk factors, it was below, but for protective factors, we want to be above that line. And as you can see on this chart, we're above on every aspect that we looked at, which is, which is awesome. But, we're still going to look at those things that are near that 50 mark to work on improving. There's room for looking at what else we can do, how can we work harder in some of those areas to get there. And our average here is 62, which is very good. But, there's always room for improvement, and that's something we want to do, especially with protective factors, because that's what's going to keep our kids safe. And as they grow older, they're going to need that more and more. And we'll go up a little bit more. The things we were looking at were, one more slide, are, and this is what we were looking at in our survey, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drug use. This is what we're going to be talking about from here on in, that our kids have been working with, dealing with, and being around. The prevalence is going to really look at the overall past year use and the prevalence in 30-day, 30-day use. So, it's giving us a long and short-term look at what kids are dealing with throughout the year. If we go to the next chart, you could see that we're looking at all this stuff, that the biggest thing here is, look at all that white space. There's things, there are things going on, but we can really hone in on some of those things and really work on them, but there's a lot that is working here in Hillsborough. There's a lot that we can say we've been working at, and our kids, and our parents, and the community have been going at that. If you break down some of them, you'll see that alcohol is our highest. Marijuana would be next. And if vaping was on this chart, it just was too, like we were saying, it's too new for them to look at completely, but we do have some questions in this. Vaping would have been between alcohol and tobacco.
Alcohol and marijuana.
Alcohol and marijuana. So, the vaping piece is coming up, and it is something that we need to look at and focus on, because it's going to be gathering in some of the other things we're looking at, which is alcohol and marijuana, which are very prevalent here. As we continue, this shows you the difference in age group. As the kids get older, we start to see more of a use of the different substances and getting more involved with things. Alcohol is pretty widely used, and as I said, marijuana is right there, but as the kids age, you know, they're trying more, they're doing other things. But, this is to help us kind of take a look at what, what we kind of already knew. As they get older, they'll be more independent, they'll be trying more things, and they need to have more of an understanding of what is out there and what's going on.
In terms of the next chart, this shows where students are using. So, alcohol is used at home and at friends' house, those are the two yellow highlighted sections there, and very low use at school was reported. The next chart is when do students use. Again, the highlighted yellow is basically on the weekend. So, alcohol is primarily used on the weekend, very low use reported during, before, or after school. So, kids really, alcohol is our number-one concern, and it's at home, at parties, and on the weekends. Oh, okay. Next chart, this is perception of risk. So, when we look at this chart, each of those categories of bars, the first one is cigarettes, alcohol, marijuana, and then prescription drugs. Each of the colored bars represents grade 8 through 12. So, you can see marijuana has the lowest perception of risk, and it's a declining risk as our students age. So, you can see the difference in the purple bar, which is our eighth graders, and then the gray bar with our 12th graders. That's something we are, you know, we want to be looking into.
So, as we continue, we're talking about the perception of parental disapproval. Again, watching the charts, you know, the kids are talking about that their parents do disapprove of what's going on. So, it's positive to look at that. And again, there's a slight decrease as the kids get older, although with prescription drugs, it is staying up there, so it is obviously not just a perceived risk or disapproval, but something that we, our parents and the community are saying, "We don't want to hear it, and we want to continue to tell kids to learn about." The parents setting set clear rules. It's important to look at the fact that sometimes, often, and a lot is going on, but we want to also look at the never's and the seldom's, because we're going to need some more work to help and support parents to talk to their kids and set those guidelines about what's going on. As you can see with the next one, breaking the rules, there is punishment for breaking rules. And again, you know, the sometimes, often, and a lot are staying up there. We can see where we can help and support parents with the never and the seldom. So, if we can work on those areas so that that is happening more often, and looking at programming that can help throughout the schools and in the community to work on Then, talking about parents talking about dangers of drugs. And I think that's, that's a huge piece when we're talking about talking to students. I think at schools, we're talking to the kids, I know the counselors are talking to people, teachers on many occasions are dealing with helping kids kind of look at those kinds of things. But again, we want to help parents be able to discuss these topics with their students, with their children, and making sure that as they grow older and more independent, they're more understanding of what these dangers are and what's really, what could really happen to them. And as we continue with the perception of disapproval, their peers, as they get older, for alcohol and marijuana, it seems to get a little bit lower, where it's being more accepted. But, the disapproval is strongest in 8th and 9th grade, and I think that's important, too, because those are transition errors that we worry about. You know, so, getting them ready and getting them to deal with things, we start off really strong, I think, in those, between that 8th and 9th grade, but if you look at some of the things we've seen in the community, our older students, as they leave us, are the ones that are running more at risk, because I think the support isn't as readily available to them. And that's important to look at when we're talking about supporting the entire community.
So, the next few slides, as we said, the PRIDE survey currently is 75 questions. It's very in-depth. It does not include specific questions about vaping or e-cigarette use. So, we had the opportunity to ask 10, I think it was 10 additional Hills, we called them Hillsborough questions, to get at things that were really specific to us here in Hillsborough. So, the next, we only picked out a couple of these, we didn't, we're not going to go through all 10, but the next slide shows one of those questions, the question was, "Random drug testing works as a deterrent to stop me from using drugs." And you can see 74% of all students agreed or strongly agree, that's the combination of the blue piece of the pie and the red piece of the pie, agree that random drug testing works as a deterrent to stop them from using drugs. This is important information for us in our community. The next slide, the question was, "Where do teens get alcohol from?" And they could choose any answer that applied, any and all answer. 40% of students report at a party, 40% report at home without their parents' knowledge, however, 20% report they get alcohol at home and their parents are aware. That's something that we, we want to be mindful of. The next question was, "Which do you think Hillsborough teens abuse the most?" 66% report that vaping and e-cigarette device is what's abused the most, and 20% report alcohol. The next slide, when you ask them, this is where we got at the 30-day use of vaping and e-cigarettes, 92% report they did not use a vaping or e-cigarette device in the past 30 days. The combination of the bottom three categories there, of once a week, three times a week, and everyday use, represents about 8% of our students. This, again, this survey was done in March. I suspect if we did this survey today, those numbers would be higher. They absolutely would be higher. It is something that's very concerning to us and something that we really are addressing. The next sort of Hillsborough question, if you will, "If you needed help with substance abuse problem, where would you go for help?" And again, they could choose multiple answers. Parents were the most commonly chosen response, and that's great. That's great for our parents to know that their kids are going to turn to them when they have an issue. Second was friends, and you can see the other categories, a student assistance counselor, school counselor, and so on.
So, one thing that we got from the survey is that we wanted now some, get a summary of what are we going to do with this. You know, alcohol is often, is one of our top things to look at. 11.8% reported using within the last 30 days. 7.8 students reported vaping within the last 30. Marijuana was next with 2.6. So, even though marijuana was the lowest and has a low risk of, perceived as low risk, we know that these things are going to increase as they get older. The other categories were very low or nonexistent, and what we're trying to do is see where we can start to look in dealing, helping parents deal with these things, especially talking about marijuana and alcohol. And I love the fact that most students report they would go to their parents. That's, that's what we strive for. You know, that our kids are growing and they know who to go to first. And with that, we can also support everyone else as far as our end goes. So, with that, we talk about our recommendations. You know, we're looking to continue the prevention initiatives that we have from kindergarten on up. You know, they, it changes a bit at the high school level and the middle school level, but, you know, things like the health and phys ed curriculum, where they're infusing a lot of this and working through it and changing it as needed. The DARE program, BAVE's program, the Life Skills Program, which goes from K through 6, things like peer leadership, which we have at the middle and high school levels. The I-Ron program, it's a homegrown initiative by many aspects, and giving kids alternatives and positive things and role models and other people in their lives that they can use as a protective factor. And I think a bigger one is, you know, continuing to educate, educate parents and increase those protective factors at home. Between the PLCs of five-week a parent workshops at middle school and younger, right? You know, they have family bonding time, the Night of Conversations, which we've had two years of, and each year, we're increasing the number of people who come and having those conversations with their, with their kids. It's important that, that we keep looking at those kind of programs in order to increase what we, you know, people being able to work with their children and increase what we have here.
And on the next slide, so, those recommendations are sort of continue to do a lot of the stuff that we've been doing. In terms of looking at some other things, we want to increase the education about the dangers of marijuana. The low perception of harm that we saw in this data is concerning. The legalization conversation that's happening in the media is only going to have an impact on this low perception of harm. And the THC levels have increased dramatically, so we know there's a real need to continue to educate parents and children on the dangers of marijuana. The second bullet point is to increase education about the path to addiction. Educate students and parents on the addictive brain. Educate students and parents on the, on the effects of alcohol on the developing brain. We know that our children's brains are not fully developed until they're 24, 25 years old. So, if we're making a choice to serve kids that are younger than that, we need to understand the effect that that can have, and that effect can be long-term. Statistics are powerful. You can become addicted to opioids in five days. Again, educating parents on, you know, many kids are prescribed opioid pain medication when they have a wisdom tooth removed, or they have a sports injury. And we just need to educate parents on, on, that, there's a place for those opioid pain medications in some ways, but we need to understand how addicting they are. And then, the other point was increasing education about the dangers of vaping. Clearly, that's an, that's an, at epidemic levels, there's been news reports just this morning about the rise in the use of those, and that we really don't have long-term data on it, and even as short amount of time as vaping has been out there, we already have people talking about popcorn lung, which is a long-term effect on their lungs. Like, so we know these things are not safe, and we need to educate parents and students on the dangers of vaping and what they are. You are, you are literally vaping liquid nicotine.
And it's an aerosol, it's not even water vapor. There's chemicals in there that replace the air, and that causes a lot of issues as well.
Yes. And then, we also want to communicate these key data points to both students and parents, the whole social norming thing. You know, we talked about, we sort of look at, 12% of our students are using alcohol on a fairly regular basis. That means 88% of our students are not using alcohol on a regular basis. So, we really want to highlight and mention and reinforce those positive behaviors, you know, sort of the idea that, are you aware that everyone is not vaping? I think that's really important for our students and our parents to understand that, that feeling that our kids, well, I have to fit in, and if everybody's doing it, everybody's not doing it. And I think if we can reinforce some of the positive information from this, that's a good thing, too. And our last recommendation would be to conduct this PRIDE survey again in two years, which would put us at the spring of 2020. The idea of a survey like this is, you know, we don't want to just look at a point in time, we want to look at trends over time, and so we would need to budget the cost to do that. It's not terribly expensive, and also, we would gain parental consent at the beginning of the school year. This way, we feel that would maximize student participation.
And I don't think we've had a survey here for, like, 12 years. So, getting this data is very important to see where we're at and what we're going to do moving forward, and consistently getting that. In the last slide, we just want to thank everyone who was part of helping us with getting this done, as we talked about in the beginning. And it's really the only way we're going to work with this issue, which is working together and bringing in information and talking about what's really going on with kids and what they really think about it, because it's about how do we get them to look at it so that their future's a lot brighter? And when this goes live.
Yeah, it's our understanding that this presentation's going to be put on the Board of Ed website. So, we added the web addresses of some of our, some of the partners that helped us with this, and you can click on those, those will be live links, and you can click on them and see some of the good work that they're doing and kind of where they fit in. And again, it's about us as a community, these are all community partners that have come together, they work with us on a regular basis, and we're just so appreciative of all of that. So, at this point, if anybody has any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions from the board?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for bringing that to everyone's attention. I've always been a very firm advocate for the drug testing and awareness, and I love how the fact that you guys went out to the students and how they answered, and it made me really proud that the first person that they want to come to is their parents.
Absolutely.
I think that's really great and open honesty, so thank you.
Says a lot.
Other questions from the board?
Thank you both. I mean, this is the second time I'm seeing it, because you presented it to the Education Committee, which we had a very in-depth discussion afterwards. But, one thing that I wanted to ask about was, Ms. Maggio, you had said that the survey was done in March, and that you think that the numbers with respect to vaping would have gone up if it was done more recently. What evidence do we have to suggest that that would be the case, or is that just sort of anecdotal?
Just really hearing what I'm hearing on the national news, that it really is, you know, such a recent epidemic. So, yeah, really, just based on that.
Okay.
And I also think because kids don't really know what it is, and they're being told it's water vapor, it's harmless, where it really isn't. And that's the stuff that's not getting out there as much.
But, we don't have any evidence from within the schools with respect to more kids getting caught with vaping paraphernalia or anything like that recently than at the end of the school year?
No more than usual that I know at this point.
All right, thank you.
I'd also like to thank Gil and Minda, who, in addition to their work for our school district, are involved in a lot of voluntary organizations and do a lot of work after school in, in dealing with this problem. And there is not enough thanks for the two of you, because you are known throughout our district as wonderful resources in this area, and thank you so very much. I'd just like to add one thing, that the pediatric journals, since our parents are our first go-to, it's interesting that our pediatric journals recommend that parents start talking to their children at age nine. And it's a little bit shocking for somebody who grew up in the, long time ago, but yeah, you know, this is the day and age that we're living in, and that's sort of very upsetting. And that eight of 10 pills produced worldwide are consumed in the United States of America. So, you work with a lot of, you know, a lot of issues in front of you, and overcoming those kinds of things are tough. But, thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you once again. Very, very interesting, a great job. Now, we're going to shift gears and talk about the School Safety Data System. We're on the second reporting, which is from the period of January 2018 through June of 2018. And here to walk us through that data is our Director of Human Resources, Mr. Michael Volpe.
Good evening. You know that twice a year, I come out to report about the previous six months when it comes to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and also, any incidents of violence or vandalism. We have to collect all of this information by the state and report it to them, and today I am reporting to you what was reported to the state. Again, as Dr. Schiff said, this is from January of this year through June of this year. There's a new system. The last couple of times I've come to speak to you, I talked about the Violence and Vandalism System. It is now known as the Student Safety Data System. So, it collects the information a little bit differently. So, a little bit of what I'm going to speak to you is comparing apples to oranges, but I'll try to make them both apples as much as I can. If you look up at the Period 1 list, all the, the column almost all the way to the left next to all of the schools, that shows incidents of violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and confirmed hivs with the previous period, starting in September of 17, which I reported out to you before. And then, the period we are talking about is Period 2, the one I'm reporting out tonight is Period 2, from January through June. If you look at those numbers, in general, outside of the asterisk ones, they stay fairly consistent. You will see some spikes, particularly at the high school and at the middle school. If you notice the note at the bottom, this comes from the decision that the board made to treat vaping and vaping devices as drug paraphernalia and a drug issue. Because of that, we report it as such, and it goes on the Student Safety Data System report. Previously, the previous six months, that was not the case. This board did not have that policy, and it was treated like we would treat tobacco, which did not have to be reported to the state. So, although it is a good thing that we are monitoring our students and taking as aggressive action as we can, it has increased our numbers over this six-month period. action as we can, it has increased our numbers over this six-month period. So, previously, we have had different surveys, and this is public information, the Niche Survey, where we were the safest school in Somerset County, safest school district. These numbers, as they change by policy, are going to change that. So, I still think substantively, we are doing the right thing, but it does indeed change the numbers. We also have other incidents leading to removal, Period 1 and 2. Those are violations of the student code of conduct that may lead to removal from school that are not violence, vandalism, or HIB-related. Then, we have our alleged HIBs in the last column, which have remained consistent. And then, HIB trainings and HIB programs. I used to present those to you in a separate report. They are now reported in this report as well. When it comes to HIB trainings and HIB programs, we do have a common baseline among all of our schools. We make sure that we all have multiple trainings and multiple programs. And then, certain schools decide to take on more trainings or more programs as we see fit. And with our new Anti-Bullying Coordinator, Mrs. Smedley, that you guys approved her for that this year, we're going to look to see if we could standardize that more so across the schools and the districts. So, not only do we have a common baseline, but we're all doing fairly much the same thing. So, this is what's reported out to the state. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. Questions from the board?
Yes, Lorraine.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe.
Sure.
The only question I have is just one in terms of data presentation. These periods are, one's for four months and one's for six months. Is that directed by the state? Why wouldn't we collect till the end of January such that it's five months and we could sort of compare?
Yeah, I can double-check on that because I'm not 100% sure, but this is consistently what we've done. And they've done it kind of with the break at the calendar year. But it's a good question as to why we don't break up January to kind of even it out there a little bit. But I can look into that for you and report back to you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much, Mr. Volpe.
Thank you.
Now, we want to take a few minutes to recognize some board members who are going to be leaving this dais. They have volunteered many, many hours of their own personal time to help direct and govern the education of the children of Hillsborough Township. And Madam President, I think you have some words to share.
Sure. I would like, on behalf of the Board of Education, to thank our outgoing members, Dana Bogacevsky, Deanna Santafonte, and Brett Cooper for their time and their effort as members. Dana, Deanna, and Brett, and all of the members of the Board of Ed who sit at this dais do so twice a month as volunteers. They receive no payment to serve in this elected position. In addition to our monthly meetings, each of our board members also takes part in multiple monthly committee meetings, reviews a lot of materials, especially today, and minutes, attend various student, school, and staff events, and speak with community members to gain an understanding of the will of those that they represent. Dana joined our board in 2011 to complete an unexpired term, and the following year, she was elected to a full three-year term and re-elected thereafter for another three-year term. While on the Board of Education, Dana has served on the Human Resources Operations and Education Committees. And I have heard through the grapevine that you're the best pediatric emergency room nurse at Robert Wood Johnson, and wife of Brett, and mother of two great boys, which is a very important part of the equation for our board members. In 2012, Deanna was elected to the Hillsborough Board of Ed. She's served on operations, negotiations, governance. She's also chaired the Human Resources Committee, and in 2017 was our Vice President. In addition, she was our delegate to the Joint Council of the Home and School Associations and the Municipal Alliance. She's also my carpool karaoke buddy, and also another awesome nurse at Robert Wood Johnson's cancer unit, and wife of Bob and mother of two great boys. This boy thing is like a little routine here. And Brett was elected in 2015 after the best Facebook campaign we had seen to date. And while on the board, he's been on the Operations and Education Committees. He's a lawyer, a college professor, owner of Max and Mia's. Okay, got that in there. And husband of Lisa and father of three great boys, who, if you want to take the camera and hit them, that would be a better view than me, so.
I was on Human Resources, too.
What?
I was on Human Resources, too.
Right, Human Resources, yes. The good old days, right? Okay, so anyway, Dana, Deanna, and Brett have dedicated many hours as Board of Ed members and have helped make our school fantastic places to be for all of our students, parents, teachers, and staff. All three of these members are dedicated to our town and our students. Each are also parents to students in the schools. But it's the needs of all of the students and staff that guides them in their decision-making when it comes to being on the board. Deanna, Dana, and Brett joined us in the spirit of community service, and I know that these three dedicated residents will continue sharing their time, talent, and skills with our HSAs, our sports teams, our theater parent groups, and many other organizations. So, Dana, Deanna, and Brett, thank you for your time, your energy, and your dedication. Your insights and professional backgrounds have been assets to the board, as well as your wonderful personalities, senses of humor, much needed at times. And on behalf of the board, I would just like to give each of you a plaque as a token of our appreciation to your dedication to our students, teachers, staff, and community. And thank you.
Thank you once again for your service and dedication to the children of the Hillsborough Township community. I, just shifting gears again, talk a little bit about the March 12th referendum. We had some questions about, well, what do these modular classrooms look like? We do have some pictures, I think, if I can get them up here. Behind me, this is one of the double trailers. We're looking at single as well as double trailers. This is an outside view. You can see that there is handicap ramp accessibility as well as stairs. This is what the classroom would look like furnished, gives you a sense of what it is. This is fully air-conditioned, properly ventilated, and it sits on top of some foundation. It's a different picture in the winter, kind of gives you a sense of what it looks like. We did have a conversation last time about some complexities of state aid and the cost of the kindergarten program. We did run an analysis that was asked for by the board and tried to simplify it a little bit. It can be pretty complicated when we discuss it. But we took a look at what was our state aid predicted to be over the next six years with full-day versus half-day programs? We looked at that. And in Year 4, the difference of full-day versus half-day kindergarten is over $3 million, which is approximately what we're looking at for a Year 1 cost of kindergarten. We looked at it over years as well, but that kind of gives you a sense of how the state aid reductions are dealt with over a period of time and how it relates to costs. So, I did want to share that with the board. I don't have a formal presentation about it tonight. And, you know, to, I'm sure we may have some questions about that in the future, but I did want to share with you a follow-up on the pictures of the modular classrooms. And I did want to reinforce that our plan is not to put the kindergartners in the modular classrooms, is to put either special area or small group instruction or office space, actually, out in the trailers. But the children would be escorted by staff members as they come and go from the trailers. Thank you. And with that, I just have another piece of good news that I'd like to share with the board and the community this evening. Congratulations to our Hillsborough High School choral members. This year, our chorus, led by their fantastic director, Ms. Juliana Lobuyondo, had 21 students accepted into the Central Jersey Music Educators Association Regional Chorus. This beats last year's results of 20 students' acceptances and sets a new all-time high for Hillsborough High School. I am pleased to share with you that the following choral members were accepted into regional choruses this year. Evan Santafonte, Lauren Sesta, Matthew Conlin, Sean Dasai, Owen Gaviken, Sidney Goldstein, Abigail Griffin, Zoe Heck, Margaret Johnson, Laura Consel, Elizabeth LeBeau, Rebecca Letts, Brandon Lockenbaugh, Abigail McVicker, Laddely Macavary Annie, Max Miller, Erin Mooney, Meg Ha Swannney, Sabrina Schubert, Kaitlyn Schwartz, and Saruni Yana Madra. Congratulations to these 21 students. We are very proud of your success. 'Tis the season to spread goodwill and cheer, and that is what all of our schools have been doing over the last few weeks. Our school communities recognize that this time of the year can be especially difficult for those in need and make it a point to help and to involve our students in the activities. From coat drives and giving trees to pajamas and food drives, our students, staff, teachers, and parents have been so generous this year. I'll just mention a few here, but I know this is just scratching the surface of good deeds that have been going on throughout our schools to benefit others. Woodburn School held their annual pajama drive to benefit the Scholastic Reading Club Great Pajama Drive. Woods Road School sponsored a giving tree to benefit the Gape House. Triangle School had a wish tree to help local families. Hillsborough High School musicians corralled in our community, and toy and food collections at several of our schools happened. It is very humbling to see all of the good works going on at all of our schools. Thank you to all those who have contributed so generously of your time in organizing these activities, and thank you to those who have donated monetarily and with items in need. Thank you very much. I'm also pleased to share that this past week, a group of teachers and administrators participated in training that was offered by Rutgers University free of charge called the Rutgers Labor Management Collaborative. This was an opportunity for teachers and their building administrators, as well as district-level leaders and district-level leaders of HEA to work collaboratively on problems and challenges facing our students as we move forward. We had two exceptional, extraordinary days that were facilitated by a professor at Rutgers, as well as by superintendents, teachers, union leaders from throughout this region. It was a really enjoyable two days, and we look forward to continued collaboration with our partners in the HEA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very short Board President's Report. This Wednesday afternoon, for interested board members, we have a Garden State Coalition of Schools meeting with none other than Steve Sweeney. I will be there, but if anybody else is interested, give me a holler. And in terms of committee reports, Governance Committee met before the last meeting, and we basically discussed all the referendum material that's already been presented in public, so no surprises there. So, other committee reports? Education, please.
Certainly. Education met on Monday, December 10th, last week. With all members present, we reviewed seven course proposals. They are all on board agenda tonight for vote. I wanted to note a couple of things. The first is that all seven of these relate to the foreign language and American Sign Language courses. We find children in high school, entering high school at a Level 3. We only have courses up through AP, which is substitutes for Level 4. And so, in their junior and senior year, oftentimes, they don't have a course to take. So, this would be available to them if they completed all of the other coursework, or if they wanted to take this, I think, instead of AP. These are course proposals. At this point, they will not go forward for curriculum development until after the March referendum, so we see how the funding is. But it is anticipated that they would not, at this point, require any new hires to run these courses. So, that was sort of a summary of the discussion at education. And then, there were two books. One series of books was for human geography, which is a new AP course that we will be running. And then, the other was a novel that has not been previously approved by the board, though I can't imagine, I thought it would have already been. And then, lastly, we discussed the referendum and all of the stuff that we've discussed already with respect to wording of the referendum and cost. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lorraine. Greg, for Operations?
Thank you. Operations Committee met on December 10th. I had to go back to page 1 to find that, sorry. We started off with some good news. We reviewed a survey that was done by, I guess, students and teachers about potential coffee shop at the high school. And the survey was very positive in favor of coffee shop, and so, we're, I guess, looking to doing that.
Yes.
Okay, so that should be fun. And it's going to be coffee, but some other drinks, too, not all caffeinated.
Correct.
Okay. So, not all caffeinated, but like a little coffee shop experience. Okay. We also had some good news that we're going to, the Operations Committee recommends hiring or contracting with EDI, which is our environmental consultant, to oversee pest management in our district. They are not the exterminator themselves, but they'll oversee a comprehensive program, which may include extermination, deterrence. And we had a pretty robust discussion. EDI had their expert on that area of their business at the meeting, which is very good because we didn't even know that some things, you know, pests or anything, like wasps or anything. So, that was really good. And it's for $4,150. They will, I think there's an annual contract.
Yeah, it is.
To oversee that. It'll be well worth it because they'll go into every building, do surveys, and find out what the issues are and make proposals to us for what we should do.
But that cost is just first year. It goes down after first year.
Yeah. The first year, there was some initial sort of like setup costs for interviewing like all the important players at all of the schools to find out what their concerns are and getting a plan set up. After that, it'll be lower annual cost, which is, thank you, Brett, for reminding me. Still working, Brett, on your last day. I appreciate it.
Couple more.
Also, we talked about, we reviewed some additional requests for air conditioning at one of our schools. That's going to roll over into next year's budget. We're not entertaining that right now. We talked about, spoke and liked about the referendum, which I won't go over again now. We might have, we might talk about that maybe in a little bit. Also, Mr. Wozni from our architect, Architect was here to talk about just very preliminary, some ideas of what a new high school would include, or basically to report to us that he had spoken with the players involved at the high school and other constituents about what they would like to see in the high school. So, he reported that we had a little talk about the HES, New Playground at HES, and how that will move forward. And we reviewed the budget calendar for next year, just the dates. That's it. Oh.
I have a question, just a clarification. With the high school coffee shop, will that come to the board, the full board, as a vote? With the high school coffee shop, will that come to the board, the full board, as a vote?
I don't think so.
No. It's not recorded.
So, it was just...
I think that was informational for us to see what the survey was.
So, it was just majority of the operations, but not unanimous, was in favor of it, so it will move forward?
Let me review the minutes, what we said about it. We had discussion on the coffee shop. The majority, I'm sorry, should I report it like this? The majority of the Operations Committee recommends to the full board the proposal from Sedexo Food Management to install a coffee shop in the commons at the high school at no cost to the district.
Right. So, I thought that when we were recommending to the full board, that it would come before the board as a vote? Is that not the case? It's just a...
I, well, I'm sorry. I mean, do you want to speak?
Sure, yes. So, it is a part of Mr. Heo's, that's the contract we have with the food service provider, that they can, there are parts to that contract that provisions that the board is allowed to adjust. So, something like all the cart menus and something like this at the coffee shop would be, they actually do serve coffee currently. So, this is more of an enhancement to the existing coffee that they serve. So, there wouldn't be, there's no change in the financial aspect of the contract, nor is there a change in the general terms of the contract. So, the board is just, it's more advisory, and we wanted to do, we wanted to share with the board on an administrative level, and being that the majority of that committee recommended it, there would be no requirement for a board resolution.
I mean, if I may. So, the reason I'm reporting it isn't just for the public, it's also, as you know, for the board. If there's a strong objection to it from the full board, then obviously, we'd have to reconsider it or ask them for more details or any questions the full board may bring. But I don't know that there's going to be a big objection to it.
So, I have an objection.
I know.
I know I'm one of nine, but I just want to clarify for the board, I do recognize that there is coffee already existing at the high school. What this is proposing is to do more of a, I guess, higher-end coffee drinks, and I am concerned that although it is no cost to the board, the nutrition of our students in terms of caffeine and calories of these high-calorie drinks, such as the frappuccinos at Starbucks, et cetera, like those kinds of drinks, I just don't think that it's in the best interest of our students to offer that as like a pass-through, and they can just pick it up as they're going. I recognize that the survey did indicate that students were interested and teachers were interested. I just don't think that it's in their best interest, even if they're interested. And I recognize that my colleagues don't agree with that, don't agree with that.
Do you like to comment, Matt?
I would like to comment. Just as a student at the high school, I know the coffee there right now is not the best quality. Personally, I don't drink it, but I know there are certain days where I wake up and I'm just very tired. There's no time to grab. If I'm in a rush, there's no time to grab anything on the way to school or make some at home. So, I would very much be in favor of like a more high-end coffee shop. And I think students at the high school, especially the older students, we're old enough to make decisions about our own health, and I think if parents really don't want their kids buying coffee, then they could just tell them not to. I mean, I don't think it's really up to the school to have to make these decisions for them. I'd just like to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lorraine?
I attended the Operations Committee meeting several months ago in lieu of Judy, where Kathy Major from Sedexo had presented this, and I was actually the one who recommended the survey be done. So, I'm grateful that it was completed and the results were read out to the board. A couple of things that I recall is that it isn't just high-end coffee drinks, but flavored coffee, some smoothies, and better breakfast-type foods that could be easily grabbed. I, too, have concerns, I share concerns, that there may be kids who get the whipped cream frappuccino or whatever. You know, there could be recommendations made later that certain things aren't served if we see that it's a problem, I'm sure. The other question that I had was, will this be something that would be a cash-only basis, or would they be able to use their POS?
I think it's both. I think they'll have the opportunity to do both. They may be able to use their POS, the card swipe, and cash as well.
Just in terms of the parental piece of it, it's hard. I know as a parent, it's hard to tell your kid you're not supposed to use your POS. It's all after the fact, and we've discussed this numerous times, how I wish that we could not, you know, make POS that if a parent chooses only for lunch, that that would be only used for lunch. I know the technology doesn't permit that in terms of the 25-minute lunches that we currently have, or 20 minutes in some schools, but, you know, I think parents should be, when this becomes available, notified that the POS is an option and to discuss with their kids ahead of time, so that a lot of staff time is not spent trying to explain to parents why a $4 coffee was charged. All right, thank you.
I don't think we're planning to do $4 coffees. I think our coffees were under $2.
Yeah, it was under, it's like $1.50, I believe, the proposal.
Yeah.
$1.25 and $1.50 were the common prices that we heard.
Yeah.
I think it's small, it's going to be small sizes, I think. That's the thing. You can make anything.
The smoothies could be more expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Yes, and there will be decaf. And this is going to be available to teachers as well, so, you know, it's a service to our entire school community. And it's not as if people aren't going to stop off somewhere else and pick up coffee if they don't get it from us. So, in terms of that, it's also an opportunity for us to make a little money. So, moving along, are you, have you completed? Oh, I'm sorry, Brett. I just wanted to ask, are you finished with your Operations Committee? Okay.
I'm not off the board yet, almost.
No. Talk as long as you want. Oh, I should never say that to a lawyer.
Well, I don't know. Do I have a phone book I can read? No. I just want to put in my two cents, on my way out the door, at least. I'm, I guess, should be sitting on that side, not this side, on this issue.
There are all sides.
I know, I know. I feel that if a kid, you know, it's a parent's decision, and a parent, for essence, can't control their kid, it's not our, as a board, decision to say they can't get something or can't, because there's tons of unhealthy stuff, there's tons of healthy stuff. If a kid wants to drink a drink, I mean, I drink these constantly, if you ever watch the videos. Again, it's a health issue, it's not a health issue. If a kid wants a drink, they should be allowed to have a drink. If a parent doesn't want them to pay for coffee or drink coffee, that's a parenting decision, and they should be able to tell their parent, just like, you know, drugs. I mean, alcohol, we saw the Pride survey. I mean, are we lumping this in? Should we now put on the Pride survey if the kid drinks coffee, or if they're going to eat sugary drinks, or the whole issue when we had whatever the energy drinks, or Snapple in our schools? I mean, kids are allowed to make choices, and truth is, kids are drinking Starbucks or whatever aren't unhealthy. A lot of our athletes, if you think they're healthy, are drinking those coffee drinks and drinking them every day, and colleges and college, you know, it's not, pro athletes are drinking energy drinks and stuff like that. So, yes, they're going to have calories, they're kids. I mean, it's not our job as a board to control each and every little kid. We're to offer choices, and that's how I feel.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Don't want to take, you're fine with it?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So, I think we have consensus here?
One rebuttal. One rebuttal. I do feel that I need help in my children's choices, and so, by offering this opportunity for the students, I feel that it is, in a way, saying, well, you know, everybody's doing it, so, yeah, we're going to make it easier, and by the way, we'll make some money. And I think that's the wrong message to send, but I do recognize I'm in the very minority here, one out of nine this time, so I will pass and let it go.
Okay. Ann?
Perhaps we could post the calorie count for these drinks, so that when students are making their optional choice, they realize how many calories they're consuming, although young people burn calories much faster.
This is true.
I think by law, you have to, don't you?
I think so. I think you have to have the calories.
Okay.
Plus, Kathy, who's a dopamine receptor, was very strong.
Okay. Okay. We good?
Yeah, I'm good with that. We have any more committee reports?
Okay, no, actually, we don't.
All right.
Did not meet, oh, do you want to give a report for communication?
It's just very, very short, just that we talked about the high school will be celebrating its 50th anniversary, and we talked about the administration will be looking into ways to keep the graduating population informed about new and coming events in the district, such as the referendum, kind of just in line with Minda and Gil's Pride survey. We were talking about ways to have anti-drug messages highlighted to the parents, and one of the suggestions was while parents were waiting in line with their children to pick up Chromebooks. So, that was a short meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, yes.
I know we go to the public next, and also board, but can, so I had a couple of comments on superintendent's report, actually. Can we do that now before we go to the public? I think that makes sense. All right. So, Dr. Schiff, thank you for your superintendent's report and showing us the pictures of the modular classroom, and also discussing very briefly about the referendum. But let's just, we don't need to go into a lengthy discussion about the referendum tonight, but I think there are two issues still out there. The first is only my issue, maybe Gene's issue. Just want to say one last time, I'm not going to belabor this, we don't have to go through the numbers again, and Ashley's been very, Ashley's been very responsive to us with analysis, another analysis, another spreadsheet, which has been great. Look, suffice it to say this, that I don't, I think the idea that state aid will have less of a reduction in state aid, or anything to do with state aid, putting it in with whether or not we should have full-day kindergarten, I think it's a very, very minor factor. I think that's been my contention all along. That's why one of the numbers looked at. We don't break even, maybe it's year nine, maybe it's year 10. We go above it, and we go, we get more in year four, but then it takes another five years until we make back from the first four years. So, look, it's, that should not be a factor. If you want full-day kindergarten because you feel it does an educational advantage, then make that argument. I didn't like this argument from the beginning. I mean, I appreciate, Dr. Schiff, that you worked on it. I appreciate that you did all of the, took all the time to find out how the state aid would be reduced, what the factors are involved, how the enrollment factors into it. That was very worthwhile to learn all about that. I just think some board members, most of the board members, I guess, want to weigh that very heavily. I put it as a tiny little piece, it's really nothing to do with it. If you want full-day kindergarten, you want to have referendum about it, go ahead. I don't think that should be a factor. Okay. Having said that, this is a second issue, and I think the attorney might have to speak to it. We fully expected this board tonight to vote on our referendum, to present a referendum and have it, you know, have it on the agenda tonight. Vic, you indicated that some precedent, there was some precedent out there that said that boards in this sort of lame-duck period, which has only existed now for just a few years, between the November election and the end of the year, where boards should not be passing major items. There's some precedent that says you shouldn't do that. I totally understand that. I'm going to give you a chance to speak in a second. I know you will do a good job. But I totally understand that. I realize why the state has said that, why the powers that be have said that, because they don't want boards to say, aha, we're on our way out. Let's think up something new and sneak it in there. Our situation is the exact opposite of that. This is the first significant vote, or maybe the first vote, on anything to do with a strategic plan that this board has worked on for years now. And so, this board is not going to be able to vote on the strategic, on an element of the strategic plan, the first vote that we've worked for over two years, maybe three years even, on this, and three new board members are going to somehow be brought up to speed, even though they may have been following it, and I'm sure they have been, but not from the inside. We brought up to speed on the day that they're sworn in, and with the deadline approaching, have to vote that day. That's ridiculous to me. It's, I think it goes counter to what the state was trying to do by setting these precedents. Okay, tell me why I'm wrong.
It's not about being wrong, but it's just what the commissioner has said in that 1976 case in Manville. And the important thing to recognize is this, right? If this board votes on it tonight, what is the impact of that? The answer, frankly, is that the impact could be nothing, because this board cannot bind what the board can do in January, right? So, the new incoming board in January can undo whatever this board does with regard to that specific question. So, if this board votes tonight to put the question to the voters on March 12th, and the incoming board doesn't want to do that, they can make the decision not to do that. They can effectively...
Nullify it?
Nullify what this board decides. Likewise, if this board says, let's take a vote, and the vote is, no, we don't want to go forward, they can take a vote in January, and they can make a decision to go forward, because the deadline will not have passed. So, it is a frustrating situation that has come about in terms of the timing. I mean, this is an issue that theoretically has always existed, because way back when, the April school elections were held in late April, and then you reorganize or organize in late April, early May.
Six days later.
Yeah, often it was very, very close.
Six days, in our case.
Right. Sometimes it was 10 days or whatever, but it was often pretty close in time. So, that didn't often happen where an outgoing board made a lot of decisions. But what's unusual about the November elections, which frankly is the same thing that happens with municipalities now, now you're more aligned in that regard, is that there's about two months, and so, some boards might only meet twice. Hillsborough is meeting four times. And there is a level of frustration with regard to, and I agree, the fact that this board has spent a lot of time thinking about it, doing the research, doing all the groundwork. So, for example, if the deadline date for the election was December 31st, this board has to act on it. There's no question as to whether or not this board has the authority to vote on it.
In other words, if we had to submit this referendum in writing to the county clerk, for instance, by December 31st...
Right.
We would...
You'd have to, yeah.
Yeah, we'd be obliged to do it, and we think it would fall.
Yeah, or if you don't do it, then it's just not going forward, right?
Right, okay.
So, that's the complicating factor here. If it were, but, you know, it often comes, I mean, this is very similar to in other scenarios where a board wants to hire a superintendent. If the superintendent isn't going to start until the new board is in place, the old board can't hire the superintendent. I mean, it can be invalidated effectively. So, that's the complicating factor that happens in this weird window, right, between November after the election, and the closer you get to January, that's what happens. So, the complicating factor is, I gave an opinion letter as to how we should proceed, but the, and if it didn't come through in the opinion letter, I just want to make it clear, so, because the question came up today for another board of education, a similar issue, not on a referendum, but it came up on another issue, and so, we discussed Hillsborough as well as this other issue, and the fact of the matter is, is that the way that it's set up, because the boards are non-contiguous, or they're non-contiguous bodies in the sense that this board is going to end, and then the new board will take over, and it's going to have three new people. So, depending upon whether you move on anything tonight or don't move on anything, if you do anything tonight that has to do with the referendum, the new board technically has the ability to undo that, if you will, right? It's unlike a scenario in which collective negotiations agreement by statute, you can have for multiple years, and you can set salary policies for up to five years in a row. That's a perfect example of when a board can bind a future board, right? By, we ratify this contract, and then, as a case...
Could you ratify, could a board ratify a collective, collectively negotiated agreement, as they call it now, whatever it's called, on December 15th?
Yeah, I mean, yes, in theory, you could, unless, I guess, the question that would come up is, depends on when the, it would depend upon when the new collective negotiations agreement goes into effect, and whether or not it was necessary to do it, so forth and so on. So, if the, if you're out, right?
Six years out, six months out.
If it's six months away...
No, six months overdue.
Oh, if you're overdue, and it's retroactive to July 1st, then yes, that would be appropriate. Yeah, I mean, so, it is a little bit complicated, but...
And then, right, and a new board coming in couldn't nullify that, but they can nullify a referendum?
No, it can't do that. There was a case where in Ramsey or Maua, I forget which one, but they tried to do a four-year salary deal by doing a two-year contract, and a two-year contract, something like that, but they answered into the, so... There wasn't, there was a case where in Ramsey or Maua, I forget which one, but they tried to do a four-year salary deal by doing a two-year contract and a two-year contract, something like that. But they answered into the, so the second two-year contract that they approved was well after the date
Oh, right.
of that board, and a new board member came on, and he filed a lawsuit, and he invalidated that. So that's the, that's the problem. It's, I agree, it's not always, or it's somewhat counterintuitive at times. But that's just the way it is, yeah.
All right, I just wanted you to explain to the public, because everybody thought we were going to vote today.
Sure.
Can I, can I just, so you just said we could vote?
So make a motion.
We could vote.
No, the opinion is you can't.
So, so my
No, he just said we could vote. They have the option to invalidate or validate it.
So let me make it clear.
Nothing's stopping us from voting.
So my, so, yeah, my recommendation is not to vote on it because
It could possibly be invalidated.
It could be invalidated, and because the next board is the board that will have the ability to, to make that decision, right? So
But they still have that ability, even if we voted yes or no tonight, they still have the ability. And as Greg pointed out, which I'm agreeing with you again, we have put a lot of work into this, and we have done a lot of research and asked a lot of questions and had a lot of opinions that, you know, I know when I came on the board, I had to vote on things. I wasn't, that happened in executive session. I wasn't allowed in the executive session, because I wasn't sworn in yet, and then all of a sudden they're like, "Vote." And I'm like, and I think this is too big of an issue affecting this, this community too much that this board doesn't get to, even, even if it's an advisory vote,
That's what it would be.
that this board is saying, basically, "We advise that we're going to pass it or not pass it. You guys could kind of do what you want, but this is our opinion of the, you know, the nine members that have been through the last three years of this or two years of this."
So, so in response to your question, yes, because that came up today in my office as well, that's basically what it would be, right? So, I mean, you could, you could actually have a resolution. There are often times when we pass resolutions, and we might pass a resolution saying, you know, "We are advising the state that we want the state to do the following. We want the state to take into account these things." So could you frame it, instead of saying, "We're approving it to send it out to the voters," could you frame it as saying, "This is what this board wants the next board to do," and take a vote on that? You could, because that's going to have the same legal effect as if you voted and said, "Let's send it, you know, let's officially approve it," because it really won't be official if it's done tonight.
I think, I, it's, Judy, look, it's not on the agenda. I don't think we can like that, you know, we didn't put it on the agenda for the public to see. We basically, by not putting it on the agenda, we've told the public that we're not. So I, we, on advice of you, Vic, that we, we didn't put it on that. That's valid. I mean, the board president helps to set the agenda, so.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, you know, all the points that have been made up. And yes, I very much appreciate all the work that everybody's done, not only for the past three years, but going back five years and longer in terms of the strategic planning. And to some degree, we sort of put ourselves in this thing, because we want, we're hoping for more community input. And we actually said, you know, we wanted to do it like a policy and have a first introduction of the question, and then come back a couple of weeks later. Well, a couple of weeks later was one week, just because, you know, there's a holiday next week. And, you know, the public input is essentially the same handful of people who are always here.
I think you're right, except for, if I'm hearing Vic correctly. Anything after November 7th or whatever it was would have not met with your approval.
Yeah, I mean, so
Any vote after that.
Well, so that case that no
So we would have had to vote in by October.
For the referendum, yes.
But, you know, at this
I didn't know that until last week.
I mean, you're certainly all free to express yourself on the, on the referendum. And, you know, if you have already and you'd like to do it again, you know, I welcome hearing from you. Your advice is always welcome. And, you know, I just think it's important that we, we move this along. Yes, Brett?
Okay, I'm just going to put my lawyer hat on, although I'm technically retired. If we voted on it, the issue only arises if it's challenged.
Well, you subject the vote to a challenge, right?
Right.
If you don't vote on it, then there's nothing to challenge. If you vote on it tonight, then in theory it could be challenged.
It has to be challenged by someone, yes. So it's not automatically invalidated. It's not automatically has to be validated again. If, if the new board comes on and everything moves forward, and then it moves forward, and no issues.
So let me be clear about that. So let's say you vote in favor of it tonight.
Yes.
The new board comes on, does nothing.
Yes.
Right, doesn't, doesn't discuss it in January. And then someone files a lawsuit. It potentially invalidates the referendum that everyone has now worked on for all this time.
Someone outside.
Yeah, taxpayer.
Yeah.
Right, who doesn't want the referendum to go forward. So the, so the recommendation is that it potentially subjects the board to a legal challenge to take the action tonight.
And not take it again in January.
And, and not take it again in January, right.
Well, that's the only issue. They validate the findings of, the new board validates or disvalidates, unvalidates? Whatever.
Invalidates.
Invalidates, that's the word I'm looking for. Then that takes this board off the hook and takes future boards off the hook.
Right, so I mean, it's, I mean, look, the
I don't care either way, but he makes, Greg makes a good point that it should be
I brought up the issue because I wanted Vic to explain it for the public and the board, why we're not voting tonight. But it's sort of a moot point, I think, because we did not put it on the agenda. People who looked at the agenda didn't see it on there, believe, I'm talking about the public, believe that we're not voting on it tonight. They're not coming down to talk about it tonight. If they might have thought about it, they saw it wasn't on for tonight. So I don't think that we can
It'll be here in January.
we can vote on it tonight, because it's too big a thing to not have, to bring, to walk on. So we can't. So I just wanted the explanation. I don't think, I think it's decision has been made.
Can I actually make a comment?
Yes, Lorraine.
I actually disagree with that, because it's an advisory vote, and we would have to take it again next, next, next year.
Yes.
So, I mean, I think we could vote to get opinion from the three outgoing board members. Of course, you're welcome to give me your opinion or anybody, your opinion without voting. But I just want to say, while we didn't put it on, the public could still come out in January, on January 7th to give comment prior to that next vote, but, which would have to happen for us not to open ourselves up to a legal challenge, according to our lawyer. So I just wanted to make that clear. I, you know, if anybody feels strongly about voting from the, from the current members who are outgoing, then they should be heard.
I mean, would it be nice? Yes, but I think we've all had our chance in committee and publicly to speak our opinions. In the end, the referendum is going to go to vote to the public. So in the end, the public will have the say, but I think we all have had concerns. They've been raised. The incoming board members, I'm sure, also will be coming in with questions and concerns that need to be answered for them to make an educated decision. But I think we also have to trust that the board is going to do right by all the work that we've done up to this point. So I'm comfortable either way, just because we have been given a chance to speak.
I agree. Thank you, Dana.
And technically, we become public, and we could come back on January 7th
Absolutely.
state our opinion from the
Hey, it caused a problem.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we'd welcome that. That would be very nice. Are we all good? Okay, moving right along. Thomas.
Does she want to go through the spiel first?
I can't hear you.
Did you want to go through the spiel first?
Actually, no. Okay, all right. Tom Isabella, nine
You know the rules.
Yes, ma'am. Nine Upper Neshanet, Tom Isabella, Nine Upper Neshanet Court. I thought I'd throw my two cents in. I thought, I think you should all vote on this tonight. But moving right along, two questions I have. I wanted clarification on the taxes per year based on that $400,000, you know, baseline there. What, so what would an average homeowner at that $400,000 baseline see as a tax increase if this referendum were to pass?
I think it was calculated at 389,000 was, was the, was the average.
The average, 389, 300.
Yeah, that was the
And I think it's $298 for the year.
Okay. Or $25 a month. Okay, and question then I had, I don't know that you would have that, this information this evening, but I think it would be helpful to know, because I know in my own neighborhood, the majority of the houses in my neighborhood are assessed above the $400,000 mark or that, you know, close to $400,000 mark. I don't know too many homes in the, in town that are at $389,000. So I'd like a percentage of the homes that are in Hillsborough. What percentage are above that benchmark of 389 or 400,000, whatever that is? Because I don't, I think it's, you know, you are, you are being transparent in the sense that you're telling us how much it would be if, at the average. But if there's a high percentage of homes in this town that are above, I think that the people deserve to know, because then they'll say, "Well, my taxes will be going above that $298 or $300." So I was hoping, if it's at all possible, at a future meeting, maybe the next meeting next year, that that could be provided, so the public could know that information.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's data we can get readily for you. But what we can get is what is the tax rate that is multiplied by $100 worth of assessed property value. And people can calculate exactly what their, what their costs would be based upon that, that tax rate multiplier. And that would be simple. But I do want to mention this for the board and the public. The, the investment of $25 more per month is based upon a ratable count that we took in early November. We will get another ratable count in February, which will be struck for both the budget as well as for the referendum. So we'll be coming back to the public with a more accurate indication of what it's going to be once we get the most, the most current ratable dollars.
Now, question I had, following up on that, being that this is very important. Was there ever a consideration, since the board has done so much work on this issue, was there ever a consideration on the board's behalf to see what, again, what percentage might be? I mean, I know you said it's not readily available or it would be difficult to get, but since you've been doing all this work up till now, I would have thought maybe that that would have been a consideration for you all to, you know, to do. You know, I just, I don't know, call me crazy, but I, I thought that that might have been something worthy of your time.
You know, we can ask the township for the median, which is the middle, versus the average, and that could be helpful. But what, what we want to do, which is very important, is for people to be able to make a well-informed decision about this. And the best way to do that is to release the tax rate, so that that can be multiplied by $100 of assessed property value, and people can look at what their home is assessed at and calculate exactly to the dollar based again upon a ratable from November, and we'll see what the rate will be, will be in February.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is there any more public comment? Public comment, going once, twice? Okay.
I think Lorraine has a comment.
Oh, yes.
Thomas, I don't know if you were here last meeting. Yeah, so I think Dr. Schiff did put up the whole chart with what your home might be worth, and you could, and so I think that is on the presentation.
I don't, I don't believe that that was on my presentation. I think I just put the
I think it was.
It was the full thing?
And you showed, you went over and you showed the 298, I believe it was. Check it out, but that That's the other thing we could do, is just give that tape.
Sure.
Also, Judy, I would like to say that I, I thought median, to me, meant middle and, you know, there are equal number of private homes above $400,000 and an equal number of private homes valued below. That's the, that's the, that's the, it's not the average price, it's the
That's the median.
It's the median price. So if there's 10,000 residences in Hillsborough, 5,000 are valued at more than 400,000, and 5,000 are valued at less than 500,000. That's, that
That's a bit difficult.
400,000, that would be the median.
Yes, Brett?
I'm going back to like second grade math, but I think I figured.
Can I, I just want to make a quick comment on the other issue that, that Mr. Gillette brought up before. I'm, I'm again with Mr. Gillette on this one. I don't think that, yes, full-day kindergarten has been lumped in here, but full-day kindergarten has something that's been discussed by this district for, for years now. And I don't think it needs to be tied together. And again, I think I said this last time, education is not, you're not going to make money off education. Education, you're losing, I mean, we're educating. It's not like when kids graduate and get a job, they're going to pay us back for the education that we're giving them. We're educating because we feel that that's the right thing to do in the state and whatever. We're not ever going to make money on education. It's not going to be a no-brainer or break even or what. You're going to educate kids, that's what it is. So if you feel, again, full-day kindergarten is worth it, then you'll vote yes, whether it's tied to state reduction or it's, or it's, we need to just do it separate and say, "We need $3 million to educate our kids." I mean, it's just like that with everything. I mean, with every, I mean, we pay for a lot of things that not everyone uses. Not everyone's in the drama club. Not everyone's on a sports team. We pay a lot of money, as, as was pointed out last week, we pay $3 million in sports, in athletics, and, you know, people are voting for that or would support that. But when it comes to full-day kindergarten, they go, "Well, it's not my kid. I don't have a kid in kindergarten," or "I'm not paying for your daycare," or whatever you want to call it. "Well, I'm not paying for your aftercare when your kid's on the sports team and they're not home or they don't have to go to the Y or something," you know? It's the same argument. If you want kids to be successful and you want to support education, you're going to vote yes for whatever it may be. That's my two cents on the way out the door.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve. So I agree with Mr. Gillette and Mr. Cooper. And so I propose to the board that we start the 2019, 2020 school budget from zero. And if full-day kindergarten is the will of the board, we fine the $3 million within the current budget. I, I think that that is, would show our priorities. And if that is, rather than go out to referendum where we risk a lot more if it fails, I think that what they said was, it rings true. Furthermore, the initial reasons for going into the referendum with full-day kindergarten, the idea is not, that's, that reason did not hold true based on the analysis, so.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, so we can move on to the action agenda?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the HIB list, overnight field trips as listed, to approve the textbooks that were reported out of education, as well as approve the revised English Language Arts Grade VI curriculum. Also approve the new courses as reported out of committee.
May I have a motion and second for items 9.1 through 9.6, please?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Got it, Brett.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions on the education agenda? Seeing none.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of human resources, to approve the resignation as listed, also contract changes, the appointment of a coach, to approve elementary intramural advisors as attached, extra-period coverage, and preapproval of extra-period coverage. Also approval of sixth-period coverage and approval of seventh-period coverage.
Okay, I'll take a motion and second for items 10.1 through 10.8. Thank you. Okay, questions, comments on the HR agenda? Anybody? Roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve monthly bills, line item transfers, monthly financials, and to accept the donation of two vertical and four drawer file cabinets from Mrs. Sanguliano, Mary Ashley. Thank you very much for your generous donation.
Okay, I'll take a motion and second for items 11.1 through 11.4.
So moved.
Thank you, second, thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
My final yes.
No, a German, oh.
Mr. Gillette?
Oh, that's right, yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we have an informational suspension report, which I'm sure everybody looked at, and comments from the board and public on old business. Are there any comments?
I do. I have, although we've talked about state aid not being the driver, as some people I have, although we've talked about state aid not being the driver, as some people, as Mr. Gillette and Mr. Cooper had indicated, I have a question regarding the plan as it was proposed at last meet, at last week's meeting, which is the timeline for full-day kindergarten if it passes the referendum. What are the safeguards in place if the referendum passes and full-day kindergarten is not implemented by October 15th? Do we have a Plan B? Because our calculations are based on we will go live, but I do think that this is a very aggressive timeline.
Our architects have, have not indicated that it's an aggressive timeline, that the modular classrooms will be in place and will be ready to go. Staff will be hired, will be ready, will be ready to offer it.
Is there a guarantee if the deadline of October 15th to qualify for state aid is not met? Or are we, the board, on the hook?
On the hook for?
As in, we won't get the state aid, the proposed state aid increase for our October 15, 2019 full-day kindergarten enrollment if we do not implement on schedule?
Well, if we don't implement, then we wouldn't get the adjustment.
Correct, so is there another party? Excuse me?
We wouldn't need, oh, you mean, I'm sorry, can I clarify what your question is?
That's fine.
If we implement, if we have it, but we, it doesn't get started on time?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
What is our Plan B? Who, who is our insurer that we are, we would basically have lev, increased the levy, but there is no, there's no guarantee? So the architect is not guaranteeing this, is he? I mean, are we taking out insurance for it? Because all of our calculations, so separating the fact that Mr. Cooper and Mr. Gillette, you know, and I do agree with them that we should talk about full-day kindergarten outside of state aid, but if, if it passes, the referendum passes, but the full-day kindergarten is not in place on October 15th, we would not qualify for the increase in state aid, so therefore, we would go back.
But why wouldn't it be in place the beginning of the school year?
Why does anything not?
But we don't, we don't need the modular classrooms to do full-day kindergarten.
Well, I thought we did.
No, but if, let's say, under, under, under Gene's scenario, that, that we don't get the modular classrooms over the summer, whatever. There are ways to move offices into temporary housing somewhere in the building and use classrooms to put the kindergarten where they're going to be, because we're not putting them in the modular classroom, we're putting other things. So if art and music have to share a room for a month or whatever till we get it done, we would still get the enrollments done, because if it's not happening day one, it's not happening.
So the question is, are there classrooms within the buildings, the six elementary schools, that would need to be retrofitted with bathrooms in order for full-day kindergarten to happen?
No, as we, as we indicated before, we can and we will be applying to the State Department of Education for a waiver. The kids will be placed in proximity of a bathroom, and that's not an uncommon request.
So my...
And we would, you know, honestly, if there was something catastrophic that occurred, we would put music or art or both on a cart temporarily until we, until we rectify the situation. But by putting it on the ballot, we, we commit ourselves to doing the program for September of next year.
So my only point is that we have no guarantee from the architect. The architect has been very professional, but it's also in the architect's best interest for the referendum to pass, and so my challenge is that there's, we, the board has no guarantee and no safeguards. The, there is no penalty to the architect if the timeline is not met. I just, in my experience, my own personal experience with construction, it always takes longer than we anticipate. From previous projects that I've seen happen around the district, the assumptions that were made upfront did not always pan out, so that is my concern. So that's number one. Number two is with respect to full-day kindergarten calculations, have these numbers been vetted by the Department of Education?
Yes.
So they confirm that if we have full-day kindergarten, we will absolutely receive the increase?
Yes.
We will have less of a decrease, that's correct. The adequacy budget would be adjusted, this has been vetted by the Executive County Business Administrator, Mr. Bill Coach.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and, you know, I think also architects don't get paid until the work is complete. That seems to be a pretty good insurance policy for the most part.
I respectfully disagree. I think that the board stands to lose the way.
This is not major construction, this is a modular unit that gets delivered in pieces and connected.
And it's also March, what is it, March, so say you start March 13th, March to April, May, June, July, August, that's five months, I don't know.
Most of it will be done over the summer. I mean, it's not going to be something that is going to disrupt the operations of our existing schools. Yes, Lorraine?
At all six of our element, current elementary schools, do we have separate rooms currently for music and art?
Yes.
So we have the existing space if we put music and art on cards?
If we, if we put them on cards, yes, but that's not, that's not the goal.
Of course, that's not the goal. I'm just saying that there is no reason to worry about this, because we have two existing classrooms that we can move fourth graders into and move the kindergarteners on the kindergarten first grade hallway, something like that, and ensure that we can implement this in September as planned, if the referendum passes.
Yes, as I indicated, if something catastrophic happened and there weren't available mobile units, we would, we would dislocate other programs temporarily in order to give us additional time to install the, these prefab modular classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you good? Okay, any other old business?
Well, yeah, are we done with the, the issues? So we can say our, you know, testimonials? I mean, you gave your testimonial, I want to give a quick, okay, so Brett, thank you for your service to the town. It was a pleasure having you on Operations Committee for, I think, all three years. We had some successes, we had a lot of frustrations, particularly Brett and I tried to get, we tried to get air conditioning, like, every month of every year seemed, but we tried and tried and tried to get air conditioning at, at various locations, and it was super frustrating and it, it never worked out. And it's, I know that probably a big disappointment to you, but I'll see, you know, so I, thank you. And if, if you had as many signs out during, on election night as you had for your consignment sale, you might have been, you might have been on the board, you might have been real. But thank you. Dana?
Thank you, thank you for your positive comments there, keep going.
Dana? I, I've enjoyed sitting next to you for eight years, actually, it's only seven, because one year I sat over there, so I missed, I didn't sit next to you for one year, but I remind you, what was that Broadway show where the people say, we laughed, we cried, we had the time of our lives? Well, we laughed, we cried, one of us cried, it wasn't me. We had, we had the time of our lives, and she made it great, and, and she stuck to her guns on every issue that was important to her for almost a full eight years, which is an incredibly long amount of service. Board members barely get by maybe two terms at that, but, but thank you, Dana, it's been a pleasure. And Dana, I've been friends with Dana for maybe over a decade now. In 2012, I was looking around in a room at Cub Scouts, I was looking around the room and I said, there's got to be somebody here who can run for school board, and I said, who, who knows everybody and who is somebody that everybody knows? And I said, I said, oh, it could be Dana. Also, we need somebody who cares about everything, but doesn't give, cares about everything, but doesn't give a crap about anything, and that's Dana, she cares about everything.
Does anybody have a hook?
No, no, there you go.
Is this your testimonial?
Yeah, testimonial.
He's roasting.
Dana's been tremendous, and she was a wonderful vice president during that year when I was president, and I don't know what I would have been, you know, doing on this board without Dana for the past seven and a half years. And negotiations was a lot of fun, till 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM sometimes, it was, it was a blast. And also, Dana also was on negotiations, I don't think you mentioned that, she was on negotiations one year also. So that's, that's my two cents to everybody, I'm going to miss all three of you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Does anybody dare?
Just making for, for the opportunity, I said, I told Pete, I said, I hope that one, I was an asset to the board, but I also think I became very apparent by being on the board.
Oh.
Because you understand both sides. So, for that, I'm sure my children are very grateful. That, no, but I really hope, more than anything, I took that away from the board. So, thank you, good luck to everyone, thank you, and continue all the hard work, I know it'll be, it'll be good. There's a lot of good things to come.
Thank you. Yes?
I just want to, I want to say, like, like Dana, I, I've learned a lot on this side of the table that I didn't know on that side of the table, and I really think, I know it's not physically possible, but everyone in this community should try to sit on this table, even if it's just for one term, sorry. But you, a lot of the stuff that we discuss over there or in committee and stuff, like Greg has said, doesn't get here, and a lot of people think, well, we don't care, we're just kind of here, but we put in a lot of hours there. I mean, some weeks, it's literally like 20 hours of meetings, it's ridiculous. But you learn a lot, and you learn why things are done a certain way, and why things are not done, and why money is spent on one thing and not the other, and why we don't have air conditioning in every building. You know, out there, I was like, oh, this is easy, we go on and say, put in air conditioning, find, you know, $124 million, you got to find some money somewhere. And then you, on this side, you realize that $124 million, sounds like a lot, but it's not even enough for what we want to do, just look at our facilities. So I, I thank everyone for the experience, and I, I've learned a lot, and I'm going to be, you won't see me probably again, but I will be working on your behalf, because now that I've been behind the doors, I could explain things a little bit better to the people out there that, that just want to complain and, and argue, and I know, being on this side of the table, you can't really defend yourself, I'll help you out as much as I can on, on that side.
Sounds good.
I guess it's my turn.
Yep.
Thank you, Brad. He's right there, yes.
My wonderful husband, came to the first meeting, now is coming to the last meeting. I found, it's like you look back on all these years, seven years, and it's very bittersweet. I mean, at the time when I stood at the podium and spoke to everyone, gosh, my children were four and six, and now they're 11 and 13, and you try to think back of all the things that you've said up here and the arguments, but at the end of the day, we sit around this table or go behind the scenes for meetings, and we truly have everybody's 100% attention. We really strive to do the best for our community, we really strive to do the best for our teachers and for everybody else. I, I don't think there's any of us that leave a meeting and don't express our feelings. I mean, it's just, it's a great town, it's a great community, and we really want the best for our students, so thank you.
Thank you. And to what, to what Dana says, it's always fun to go at it with each other, especially in committee, when, you know, we have a diversity of opinion on things, and I think that diversity of opinions makes all of our decisions better. And I would like to remind you all, you can run again.
Too bad Chris isn't here to tell us how to do that.
Okay, be nice. Greg?
Yeah, that's okay, I said to Greg when I came in, I was just like, oh my gosh, this is my last night, with sitting next to you, and your hair wasn't gray and you had hair.
I said, you're in there with Greg.
Okay, I've started. Okay. Well, fair is fair, Greg. Okay, does anybody else have any disparaging comments they'd like to make about each other?
They're all good, it was great.
If not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Anybody opposed?
Nay.